Okay, we're almost, here we are. Okay, we're gonna go on. This is Agenda Item 66. For possible action, any items from the morning session that the council staff and/or applicant wished to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. So, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The following items have been requested to be held in abeyance, tabled, withdrawn, or stricken. Item 67, the nuisance notice and order for failed inspection fees and daily civil penalties at 312 South Maryland Parkway. Property owner, MS IV LLC Ward 3.
You gotta vote there.
There we go. There we go. We're gonna hold that in abeyance until November 6, 2019, requested by the applicant. And items 74 through 76, Zone 76884, SUP 76885, and SCR 76886. Applicant owner, L. Walker LLC, at the southeast corner of Bonneville Avenue and 8th Street, held in abeyance until October 16, requested by the applicant. And that will be my motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. No, I don't see mine here. Anyway, count me in, I, please. Okay. And please post. Thank you very much. Motion carries. And as you can see, everybody that's up there in TV land, we have flowers down on your left and my right, and happy birthday yesterday to what beautiful, lovely, our Councilwoman, Olivia Diaz, Ward 3, and thank you. Happy birthday to you. Many more. So, okay, what did I do? Did I do something?
I'm sure it was not you.
I'm sure it was me. I do all these things. Okay. We're on to Agenda Item number 67, of course, was obeyed to the 6th of November. So, we're on to 68 through 70, or on consent agenda or considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the Department of Planning. Mayor Pro Tem, may I have a motion to approve consent agenda items number 68 through 70?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve consent items number 68 through 70.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. Okay, and the motion carries. Councilman Anthony, you did it. Yes, he did. Thank you very much. Motion carries. And now, we're on to one motion, one vote. Items 71 through 78 may be considered in one motion, one vote. Items 74 through 76 were held in abeyance to October 16. We're going to move on. Items 77 through 79 on this portion of the agenda to be heard after this vote. Remaining items are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request that item, excuse me, removed from this portion of the agenda. Okay, so item, I'm gonna read 71, 72, 73, then 80 and 81, and I'm not sure if there's an 82, but I'm gonna peek. Oh, okay, here we go. MOD 76935, applicant owner Howard Hughes Company LLC, request for a major modification to the approved Summerlin Master Plan development to change the Summerlin SFSD, single-family special lot development, 18 units per acre. Development standards to include an attached product type, including exhibits 2.10 and 2.11. PC plan, community, Zone 2, Ward, and that's Councilwoman Seaman. Agenda item 72, MOD 769 through 6, applicant owner Howard Hughes Company LLC, and a request for major modification to the approved Summerlin Village 21 master development plan to change the Summerlin land use designation on three parcels, JK and M from SFA, single-family attached in five parcels, NO, P, Q, and R from VC Village Commercial, and SFA single-family attached to SFSD, single-family special lot development in one parcel, from SFA, single-family attached to MF1, low-density multifamily on 328.17 acres, northwest corner of Far Hills Drive, and Clark County 215 PC plan, community zone, Ward 2, with Councilwoman Seaman. Number 73, TMP 76950, Summerlin Village 21 parcels, K dash. Applicant Richmond Homes, American, Richmond American Homes, Nevada Inc., owner Howard Hughes Company LLC, request for a tentative map for 86 lot, single-family residential subdivision on 8.20 acres, southeast corner of Kendall Corner Way and Desert Foothills Drive, PC plan, community, zone, SFA, single-family attached, special land use designation. Proposed FSSD, single-family special lot development, special land use designation, Ward 2, Councilwoman Seaman. As mentioned earlier, items 74 through 79 are not being considered for action under this portion of the agenda. So, we move on to 80. Item 80, EOT 76739, applicant owner 4343 North Rancho Drive LLC, and a request for a first extension of time for a non-conforming liquor establishment tavern at 4402 North Rancho Drive C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 4, Councilman Anthony. And number 81, EOT 77199, applicant owner Industrial Road 2440-2497 LLC, and a request for a fifth extension of time in a non-conforming liquor establishment tavern use at 2476 Industrial Road, M Industrial Zone, Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz. The Planning Commission recommends approval on all items, and staff recommends approval on items 71 through 73. All items are public hearings, which I declare open. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on items 71 through 73, 80, or 81? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Mayor Pro Tem, may I have a motion for the one motion, one vote, items 71 through 81, excluding 74 through 79?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve one motion, one vote, items 71 through 73, and items 80 and 81.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to 77, 78. VAR 76861, a request for variance to allow deviations from title 19.10.020, CV Civic Development Standards, and number 78, SDR 76862, and a request for a site development plan review for proposed city park. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas and 3.90 acres, southwest corner Marion Drive and Harris Avenue, CV Civic Zone. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval on both items. Caesar on Ward 3 with Councilwoman Diaz. Public hearings, which I declare open. Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, the subject site is located in the southeast sector of the 2020 Master Plan, which is the most underserved in terms of available park space. The most recent 2020 Master Plan Parks Element Analysis, which was conducted in 2013, indicates that the southeast sector contains approximately 1.37 acres of public, of park space per 1,000 residents, which is well below the adopted standard of 2.5 acres per 1,000 residents. Specific to the ZIP code of 89106, the ratio is further reduced to just under an acre at .99 acres of park space per 1,000 residents. The proposed park and trailhead will provide much-needed park space in this area of Las Vegas and provide a link to the regional Las Vegas wash trail. Staff has recommended approval, and I believe we have members of Public Works to present on this item as well.
Thank you. So, let's go ahead, and thank you, Mr. Summerfield.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Marty Siska. I'm Architectural Project Manager for Public Works.
Do you wanna say that again at the mic? So, our clerk heard it for sure.
My name is Marty Siska. I'm Architectural Project Manager for Public Works.
Thank you.
I'm gonna present Harris Marion Park, and as Robert explained, it's on the southwest area of Nellis in Washington, about a quarter, about a fifth of a mile, in Ward 3. This is the lot right now, on your left. We went to a public meeting and explained to them that we had supplement funding, and there were some requirements. We had to provide a field, some landscaping, walking path, wash improvements, and drainage improvements, and we wanted to see what they wanted for their neighborhood. And they were, they wanted horse amenities, and they liked the playground area. So, this was kind of progress in design, and we addressed some of the traffic and pedestrian areas up on the northern portion because of the middle school pedestrian and the wash that goes across. We did the wash work, and the 100-year flood is on the southern portion where the arena's gonna go. We did the playground and addressed the eastern neighbor concerns, too. The programming of the soccer field up on the northern part provides activity. So, the, the park is, has two zones to it. The northern part is the public area. The southern part, the arena, is more for the neighborhood, and it'll be accessed through the neighborhood from the eastern portion. On the northern park, where the soccer field is, there's gonna be a playground and kiosk on the very northern portion. And on the pictures of the side, you can see that we're starting to develop the horse theme. You can see the horsey playground area. This is more development of the horse theme and inspiration for the fencing system, to integrate the soccer fencing into it, the playground fencing into it, the traffic barrier on the northern area. The ranch entry arches will be to the north off of, I believe it's Marion, excuse me. And then also, on the east, from the neighborhood, will have a entry arch, too, and that's where they can enter with their horse, and there'll be vehicle maintenance, but it'll be more closed just to horse access. I added this slide so you could just, if you had any questions on the relationship to the fences, where they, they went. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
I'd like to know, is city maintenance and operations cleanup of the horses?
Well, we've been having them at our meetings, at our design meetings, and we'll have smaller buckets for the horse manure. There's been neighborhood communication, too, and they're really excited about this arena, and they're, they're trying to take ownership and keep it clean so the maintenance doesn't have to do so much. I'd like to put a tractor in the maintenance shed so they can help clean it.
Well, and especially in the warmer months, and then the flies and everything, and since it's a park right there, and I don't see any water feature, which is costly, and, you know, not certainly the water district, it wouldn't be excited about that, but knowing that horses are horses, there is something there. And I don't know what our city maintenance and operations sees to in this, and is that considered, Mr. Summerfield, in this planning?
Madam Mayor, I would actually defer to Chief Cervantes, since he oversees parks and operations and maintenance related to what they program for the maintenance of this park.
Yes, so, Chief Cervantes, Chief Operations Development Officer. So, Mayor, this park will provide regular maintenance. We do it near the park. Our folks are out there anyway, having to mow the lawn and clean. It's part of their cleaning duties to also take care of this, this facility. It's not gonna be heavily used or programmed. There's properties surrounding this area that are rural and have horses, and so it'd be for their neighborhood horses to come and use it, not for programming of events. So, the maintenance won't be too much. It'll be minimal, and our folks that are already out there doing the regular maintenance will be able to take care of it also.
Okay, thank you. I just, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to be heard on Agenda Items 78, 7 and 78? Yes? Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you. I might have missed it, but where you're going to be having the horse trails, do you have a fountain for the horses to fill up the water buckets and?
We're having automatic waters in the corners for, and also some horse.
The automatic water in the corners are for the dust, but do you actually have?
Oh, yes, we do. We have a rotor system, and that's part of the fencing system. We have lighting. There'll be lighting for the soccer field.
No, you're missing my question.
And there'll be sprinklers for the arena.
Nope, you're still missing my question. So, when we bring some horses to a park, generally if we run them around, around trails or arena, we need a fountain to fill up a bucket so they can drink water. So, do we have water fountains for bucket water for horses?
We're putting automatic waters in for the horses, little, those little bowls, so then it's, they push their nose in it and water comes out.
Okay.
Or we could provide quick couplers to put buckets and fill them up that way also.
So, they'll be drinking, so, so?
They'll be drinking water for the horses.
Okay, thank you.
And is this turf or artificial turf?
The arena is dirt.
Dirt, right.
And there, we've had some different types of recommendations for dirt, but we're gonna use a county specification. It's been used at Bradley, and our maintenance people like it. It seems to turn over well and stay fluffier, and that's what we use in the arena.
So, I'm speaking specifically about the soccer field?
The soccer field will be a synthetic turf.
Okay.
Right now.
Okay. So, I can't recall if I closed the public hearing, but anyone else wishing to make comment? I will close the public hearing, and so, Councilwoman, lucky you with a new park.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, the reason I wanted to pull forth the items is so that the public, especially those in Ward 3, as I crossed paths with them, they have asked me about where we were in the process with the park. So, it would, I thought this was an opportune time to share, shed light, show them the developments, the excitement, how it's coming well, very nicely. I'm very excited about how we're complementing all the pieces of the equestrian side with the play area for the children, with the soccer fields. And just one final question before I make the motion. Are we using the same synthetic technology as we are utilizing in Baker Park?
There's been some conversation on that. At Baker Park, they use like a pebble with rubber on top of it. There's another coated sand that the maintenance people seem to like, and I was gonna try that on this project, and the maintenance has bought into it. They seem to prefer it to the one that's gonna go to Baker Park.
I'll just request you come and brief me privately. We don't have to take up council time, just to kind of know the nuances and the differences between one versus the other. But with that, I'm very pleased with your work in progress on this park, and I think the community is waiting for us to get the shovels in and, and then cut that ribbon. So, with that, I'll move to approve items 77 and 78.
Can they be taken together?
One at a time. So, I'll move to approve item 77 first.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 77. Please vote and please post. And that carries, and Agenda Item 78, please.
And I move to approve Agenda Item 78.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 78. Please vote and please post. Motion carries as well. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 79, SDR 76887. Public hearing, applicant owner, Goodhood LLC, possible action, a request for a site development plan review for proposed six-story parking garage with 8,403 square feet of ground level retail and a one-story, 8,528 square foot addition to an existing 35,481 square foot office building with waivers of Appendix F interim downtown Las Vegas Area 1 development standards on 1.09 acres at 201 South Las Vegas Boulevard, C2 General Commercial Zone, Ward 3, with Councilwoman Diaz. The Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant and representative present? Hello?
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of council, and please, Councilwoman Diaz. For the record, John Curran, 985 White Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, to briefly describe the project and answer any questions you may have. Dapper Companies is pleased to present the SNL Building, as we're calling it. It's the former home of the Nevada Savings and Loan Headquarters on Las Vegas Boulevard and Carson. Major adaptive reuse redevelopment project, which will incorporate all the original architectural elements with some modernized exterior glazing. The ground floor retail will, will host the United States Postal Service, as well as the Broken Yoke Cafe, two floors of Class A office coming to downtown, and then a dynamic rooftop bar and restaurant as well. Additionally, we're proposing the construction of a six-floor, 210-space parking structure across the alley with some ground floor retail as well. This parking structure will support the needs of the building, as well as the burgeoning Carson Avenue with a sort of restaurant row that's developing there. In the future, we will bring a application for a vacation of a portion of this alley, which will enable access from the parking garage to the, to the building for convenience of the tenants. Reason we were pulled off of one motion, one vote is we had a updated Condition Number 15 that Public Works had drafted. I don't know if they need to read that into the, into the record, or if I can do it. Okay, you've got it. So, we do agree to that revised language in Condition 15. We're very excited about this project, pleased to be working with the award-winning local design firm Carpenter Cellars Delgado on this. We think it's going to continue the momentum that's building downtown Las Vegas, and with that, respectfully request you follow staff and Planning Commissions' vote for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Curran. Let's hear from our planning.
Madam Mayor, so, the proposed development, as mentioned, will add some much-needed parking within the downtown Las Vegas overlay Founder's District and Entertainment District area. The renovation of the existing building will allow for the introduction of some new office and restaurant spaces that will contribute to the redevelopment momentum within the downtown core. This project is compatible with the surrounding development in the area and advances the redevelopment goals of the 2045 Downtown Master Plan. For these reasons, staff is recommending approval of the request and the associated waivers. Public Works, as mentioned, has a revised Condition 15, and so I would turn that over to Mr. Anderson to read that for the record.
And Bart Anderson, Public Works. I apologize for the length of the condition, but here we go. Condition number 15 of item number 79 is recommended to be amended as follows. Submit a licensing agreement prior to submittal of construction drawings for this site to allow design and construction of portions of the proposed building with an existing right-of-way. This license agreement shall suffice to allow the issuance of demolition permits and foundation permits. However, a petition of vacation of public alley right-of-way in conflict with this proposal shall be submitted and approved by the City Council prior to approval of construction drawings for this site, and shall record prior to the issuance of any further building permits within the area to be vacated. Vacation shall retain public easements to maintain full public access rights to the alley to a height of 15 feet, 4 inches, and such other utility easements as requested by utility franchise holders. In addition, an aerial easement shall be granted to the applicant to allow the construction and maintenance of the proposed parking structure over a portion of the Carson Street sidewalk as depicted on the approved site plan, and to accommodate continuation of the artistic decoration feature onto Sixth Street, commencing at the height of 15 feet, 4 inches. The applicant shall enter into a formal agreement with the city that details the requirements associated with the vacation easement and subsequent construction of the structure over the alley and sidewalk right-of-way, and any conditions contained therein shall be complied with prior to recordation of the order of vacation.
To which you agree.
We agree.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard? Agenda Item 79. Any other comments from staff?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I'll close public hearing, and we will turn this over to Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to know, how quickly do we foresee this coming to fruition? When is the ribbon cutting kind of, what's the ETA on that?
I would love to commit to an opening date. It's a very complicated project with a lot of different phasing and elements, so I'm not sure I can commit to a date now. We should receive a building permit from Building and Safety today to drop a modular trailer in the parking lot that will house the United States Postal Service on an interim, so that's a big milestone. They're the last remaining tenant of the building. Once they move out, we'll continue demolition and get to work, and this amended Condition 15 helps us with phasing. We can go ahead with demolition and the foundation work while we submit the application as well. So, I don't have a firm date to offer to you, but we're locked, loaded, and excited to get to work.
It'll take a couple of years?
No, I, I think it'll be, confidently I can say, 2020. Not sure if I can commit specifically within there, given all the complexities of the project.
Fair enough. And then, when you mentioned about the trailer coming in for the postal service to utilize it, brought to mind folks who have their post office boxes there, so how are we handling their ability to access their mail while this is all going on?
Sure. So, we have a 2,100-square-foot modular office, that modular office trailer that will be in the parking lot right here, and all, all the PO boxes will be moved there, the same retail hours will be operated, and it, it'll just close over a long holiday weekend, actually, and it should be not very impactful to the customers.
That's great to hear.
Excuse me, if, and my Councilwoman, I know where I live, and it's, the, the boxes that are out in the street for the post office have been broken into again and again. I don't know what you consider about security, and if the U.S. Postal Service should provide that, but the weekends and the night times, that this trailer is gonna be ready for anybody to break in?
If I may, the United Postal, the United States Postal Service does have, you know, security requirements. The walls that are being built within there are fortified. The retail hours, it's, it's only going to be open when the postal service staff is there, so, you know, they do have those concerns, but it will be shut down on the weekend at night, if that's the time you're, you're worried about.
I'm wondering, I mean, trailers are trailers, and they're, first of all, easy to become, they're flammable, three minutes, I think, on trailers if they're of that type. But my biggest concern is the available to the general public that may wanna abuse the, who's watching them at nighttime and over the weekend when it's closed at 1:00 or something.
Sure. Well, the parking lot will be lit up. I mean, this is right off of Las Vegas Boulevard. There's a ton of pedestrian activity. You know, there's, there's marshals, there's roving security nearby, so we're, we're concerned and share those concerns about security, but I believe we'll be adequately covered.
On private property, is that not the responsibility of the ownership of the private property? It would seem to me if it's city property, we're responsible for that safety and security. So, this is private property, even though you're having public mail in it? So, I just, I'm passing that down to you. I'm concerned. I know the mailboxes have been violated. What's the one, what's our mail on Decatur and South?
Oki, Oki. Decatur, Oki.
Yeah, what, what's that? Garside. The Garside is an example of vandalism and theft of mail, and so, I don't know, I just pass this on to you to make sure that it is secure, safe, and monitored. The vandalism goes on after hours, and certainly Saturdays and Sundays, so I don't know whose responsibility it is, but just to make sure that's taken care of.
Thank you, Mayor, and I think you bringing it up, I think, will ensure that the project and the developers will have that conversation with the United States Postal Service so that they can ensure that we're protecting folks' mail in the transition. But I'm confident they're probably, they're professionals at this. They've done beautiful work in other parts of our city, and I know that they're also gonna try to turn it around as quickly as possible so that we can get the mail back into the facilities as quickly as, as practical. into the facilities as quickly as practical.
Okay, so with that, you, on Number 79?
Yes, I move to approve Item 79 with, subject to the revised Conditions 15 that was read by staff.
Thank you very much. There's a motion, please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck. We look forward to that. How many years was that vacant, Mr. Summerfield?
Madam Mayor, the post offices maintained a continuous presence, but I think there's been various tenants, but I would have to defer to Mr. Curran, but I believe they have not had very many tenants in that building for a while now.
Thank you.
We're excited to fill it up soon.
We're delighted. Move it quickly. Great. Okay, Agenda Item 82. VAR 76400, public hearing, applicant owner Aldigunda Duran Mendoza for possible action requests for variance to allow a six-foot corner side yard setback where 15 feet is required for proposed detached accessory structured covered barbecue and to allow a zero-foot separation from the main building where six feet is required on .70 acres of 1,400 Comstock Drive, RE Residence Estate Zone, Ward Five, Councilman Creer. Staff recommends denial. Planning Commission recommends approval. This is a public hearing. I declare it open. Is the applicant present?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is Rick Salem, 596 Kelford Drive, representing the owner. We are looking to build a patio cover over an existing patio for an enclosed barbecue. The setback is on the side off of Sturo Street. We have talked to Councilman Creer on this and also the neighbors. Councilman Creer did ask that we get some information from the neighbors approving this. I received 15 letters from the neighbors that are directly adjacent to this property across the street, touching the rear, the sides, and anybody that passes by that is in direct contact with it have them hear all recommending approval or acceptance of this design. I'm sorry for the lateness of this. He handed it to me at about 9:30 last night.
Okay.
There you go. The structure is going to be placed over an existing patio. It is in conformity with the home and the other areas around the house as far as the stucco is compatible, the roof is compatible, everything looks the same. There's nothing that we're trying to do that's not looking towards the house.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions that you have, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Let's turn this over to Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, in view of the absence of any hardship imposed by the site's physical characteristics, staff has concluded that the applicant's hardship is preferential in nature and is therefore outside the realm of NRS Chapter 278 for granting a variance, and therefore staff has recommended denial of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone interested in making comments here, please come forward. I will close public hearing. Any questions from our council before I turn it over to Councilman Creer? Councilman Creer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to go with staff's, I mean, planning's recommendation for approval.
Okay, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 82. Please vote. And please post. Thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you very much.
Motion approved.
See you soon.
Okay, we're on to Agenda Items 83 and 84. Okay. VAR 76602, on a request for variance to allow a nine-foot perimeter fence where eight feet is maximum allowed with barbed wire where such is prohibited. Number 84, SGP 76603, request for special use permit for closed open air vending, transient sales, lot use. Applicant is Jonathan Ibarra, and the owner is AGCom One LLC on .66 acres, 1935 Fremont Street. C2 general commercial zone. Both items, staff recommends denial. Planning Commission recommends denial on 83 and approval on 84. These are in Ward Three with Councilwoman Diaz and public hearing items which I declare open. Is the applicant present? Okay, Mr. Summerfield, no applicant. Oh, coming. You want to speak right into the microphone? Perfect.
I'm Jonathan Ibarra. This is my dad, Salvador Ibarra. We're with Ibarra's Food Truck Builders over at 1935 Fremont. So we're here to get approval for the open air vending on 1935 Fremont.
Okay.
For 83, we went over that last time. We do have it scheduled to get removed on Friday, so we agree with that. So we're just with Number 84.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Summerfield? Mr. Lowenstein?
Thank you.
We'll keep going.
So just for clarification, you mentioned the removal of the barbed wire. Is that meaning that you're no longer requesting the variance for wall height because of the...
Correct.
Okay, so, all right. Regarding the application, the applicant is proposing to operate a 24-hour per day on a lot adjacent to residential zone lot where hours operations are limited to 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Staff has determined that due to the limited distance from residential development and proposed hours of operation, the use cannot be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding land uses. It also should be noted that we, the planning department, had received a pre-application conference request for the property owner who intend to develop the subject site and the adjacent site to the east into an outdoor entertainment venue with a stage, mobile food vendors, as well as tavern limited within the building located at 1935 Fremont Street while maintaining the existing and proposed uses on the site before you now. And I would say in regards to the variance, if they are indeed going to remove it via, in a timely manner, that you would withdraw without prejudice the variance application if motion's made.
Thank you. Let's have the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to comment on Agenda Items 83 and 84? Okay, let me close that and let me turn this now over to Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just want to understand what you're trying to do with the space in Item Number 84. I know that my office has been trying to reach out to you so that we could have this conversation before getting to this point, but we haven't had success in getting you to connect with us and share your vision, and so now we're having to do it here. So can you explain the purpose of 84? Because I'm not, I'm not at all versed in what you're trying to accomplish.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We want to put a food trailer right in front of the property. It's there currently. I'm sure you've seen it. We're just trying to get approval for the special use permit.
And I think if I heard staff correctly, you're trying to run it all day or...
24 hours if it's possible.
24 hours.
There's a nightclub across the street. There's a lot of action going on all night.
Okay. And I know that, I haven't seen very many food trucks that operate 24/7, and if staff can clarify for me, I know that there's some that can operate maybe till 1:00 in the morning. What is usually something that we look at when we're approving the times?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. So when adjacent to residential, the code calls out 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in consideration to that proximity to residential. When they're not, they can operate in a 24-hour capacity. However, you know, it comes down to the business model and what works. In this particular case, they are close proximity to residential from parcel line to parcel line, and therefore we're recommending denial of the use permit to adhere to the 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. hours of operation. The reason for this use permit is because they want to exceed those hours, so at your discretion, you can amend those hours however you feel fit.
So currently, you're operating a food truck, and what are your current hours? Just 10 to 8?
Right now, I believe it's about 12, about 12 o'clock.
Have you had any comments back from neighbors to your office on what's been in operation? And you can also reevaluate after a period of time, let them continue to operate but within a review of, and then reevaluate it. I'm assuming that's legal, Mr. Scott.
It is, Madam Mayor. What you can do, Councilwoman, you could give them the hours that you, that planning has indicated. You can give them longer hours. You could put a review condition on it, so put a review within three months, six months, a year's period of time, and then if you want to have them come back to you to see if there's any problems, or it could be done administratively, and then you could adjust the hours from there if there's a problem.
So, but they have been in operation these hours already, correct?
Not from my understanding, then you're operating until about...
Right now, we're just operating until about 12:00 a.m. Sometimes it does go a little further up to maybe 1:00 when people kind of stay around, because there is a nightclub right across the street.
Oh, so you get business and that's open 24/7?
Right, my rights.
Yeah. So, the nightclub.
I think I'm comfortable approving, or ours are operation through about 1:00 a.m., but not...
That's perfectly fine.
Okay. So, and then can we do it conditionally so that in six months?
Yeah, you can place...
Can come back and see how that's going for all parties and then go from there?
If I may, through you, Councilwoman, so then my suggestion, if you want a required review, typically on these, we would say an administrative review in six months, and if we have any problems, then we kick it to a city council review if that's acceptable. So, Mr. Lowenstein will draft a condition that he'll read into the record here real quick to add that condition.
Is that agreeable?
Thank you.
All right, so Mayor, oh, sorry. Mayor, through you. Councilwoman, so as far as I hear, I had two different conditions. I've got one for hours of operation and I've got one for a required review. So the start time, are we doing 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. or 1:00 a.m.? Okay. Okay, so the first condition of approval would be the hours of operation shall be limited to end 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. The second condition of approval will be an administrative required review shall be conducted within six months from the date of business license issuance.
Tell us.
Agreed. That's an agreement. Okay. So that would, on Agenda Item 83 then?
So, Madam Mayor, we're going to withdraw without prejudice, Agenda Item 83?
Madam Mayor, through you, yes, Councilwoman. So we need the applicant to affirm on the record that they will have the fence down before next week, and we'll send out someone from code enforcement to verify that the additional layer of fencing that has the barbed wire is down. But if they affirm that, then I would ask that they request to withdraw that application without prejudice, that you vote to allow them to do that, and then hear the next item.
Okay. So, Mr. Ibarra, we just need to hear from you that you are agreeing to staff's terms that you will have that barbed wire off, and then our city staff will come out to verify that it's off? So first, can you speak to that?
Yeah, we agree.
Is that sufficient for you, Mr. Summerfield?
Correct.
So now can you say, can you request to withdraw?
Request to withdraw. 83. Without prejudice.
Awesome. And then...
Is that a motion then?
That is a motion.
Yes, Madam Mayor, you will need to vote on that motion to take that item off the agenda.
Okay, so there is that motion.
So we're moving to withdraw Item 83 without prejudice.
Are we in agreement over there? Is there an agreement up here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Please vote and please post. Okay, so that far we have. Now we move on to 84.
Just have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Diaz. So you guys have been operating?
Correct.
In this particular location?
Yes.
Without the special use permit?
They allowed us to, we're there.
Who's "they"?
They have license.
Who's "they"?
For the food vendor.
The property owner?
Correct. No, no, for the food trailer.
So, that's kind of why I'm confused, and I apologize if I'm...
Councilwoman, maybe planning can clear up. In fact, have they been operating this particular location? If so, has it been with a permit, or has it been in violation of a permit?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So from the staff report indicates we've had some code enforcement issues with open air vending on the lot. The licensing question, I don't have in the staff report a notation of an issued business license. He may be talking to a health district component or something of that nature. However, from the zoning ordinance, if they were complying with the hours of operation, they would be able to operate, but I don't see a license issued to the site.
So I just...
To clarify that, it's a mobile vendor license right now. It's not stationary, so they're only allowed there for about four hours. It's our property and we allow them to park there for four hours, which is why we're here to get the hours for stationary, which will be from like 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m.
Okay. But just probably, look, we're confused, and I'm sure you're confused, but you were operating, you had food trucks on that property that didn't have a special use permit in order to operate?
Correct.
Okay. And then not to implicate you or to, I just, I just think it's important, though, that people understand that if they are not following the regulations, then they need to, hence you're here today...
Right.
...to make it right.
Okay.
But I just think it's important to understand that as you, if you do another one, you know, you're going to have to get a special use permit in order to operate those vending food trucks on another piece of property.
Correct.
You see my entrepreneurs, and you're probably going to have these all over the city, so good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we're on to 84.
All right, Mayor, so I move to approve, subject to the conditions Mr. Lowenstein put on the record?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to amend the required review just from the date of final approval.
Today, you mean today?
So as, it would be six months from today.
Today.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So your motion, did we all vote?
No, it's not coming up.
Oh. Okay. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 84. Please vote and please post. There it is. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, now we're on to Agenda Items 85 through 90. 85, GPA 76573, request for general plan amendment from GC General Commercial to L1R Light Industry, that's an L-I-R, Light Industry Research on 1.28 acres at 1616, 1622 and 1630 Sunset Drive, number 86, ZON 76574. Request for rezoning from C2 General Commercial to M Industrial on 1.2 acres at 1616, 1622, 1630 Sunset Drive. Number 87, VAR 76575, and request for variance to allow a 95-foot wide lot width where 100 feet is required and to allow an 8-foot front yard wall where 5 feet is the maximum allowed at 1616 Sunset Drive. C2 general commercial zone proposed M Industrial. Number 88, SDR 76576, and a request for site development plan review for heavy machinery and equipment storage development on .44 acres at 1616 Sunset Drive. C2 general commercial zone proposed M Industrial. Number 89, VAR 76577, and request for variance to allow an 8-foot front yard wall where 5 feet is the maximum allowed at 1622, 1630 Sunset Drive. C2 general commercial zone proposed M Industrial. And number 90, SDR 76578, and request for site development plan review for heavy machinery, equipment storage development on .84 acres at 1622, 1630 Sunset Drive. C2 general commercial zone proposed M Industrial. The item, on Items 85, 86, 89, and 90, the applicant owner is Misty Rose Holdings LLC et al. On Items 87, 88, the applicant owner is George Tony Lopez. On all items, staff recommends denial. Planning Commission recommends approval. These are in Ward Five with Councilman Creer, public hearings which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative, hi, representative present?
Yes, ma'am. Ricky Barlow for the record, representing LV Access, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Misty Rose, as well as Tony Lopez on both of the items before you're here today. First and foremost, allow me the opportunity to wish Councilwoman Diaz a happy birthday, and I pray that you have a great day. Enjoy your day. I have had an opportunity to meet with Councilman Creer and his staff on several occasions as it relates to the item here before you, Mayor and Council, today. This item, or I should say both items, are landowners who have operated out of these two parcels for more than 15 years. two parcels for more than 15 years. They're a landscaping company and also a light equipment company that has operated as subcontractors for the widening of I-15 with being one of the subcontractors for Keywood. And the process that we've gone through right now is actually cleaning up a lot of the zoning matters, specifically in this area, being that they are out of compliance as far as the use, as far as the city's code and its use, and so we're bringing this item before you today to get in compliance with the City of Las Vegas, so that there won't be any further code issues as it relates to the operations that have been taking place for the last 15 years here. I can assure you also that there will be several more applications coming before this body, because all of the parcels adjacent to these parcels are also out of compliance as well, and so they too will be coming forward in order to ask for the same requests. It's a small island right at the corner of Vegas and Rancho, and to the north of this property, you have U-Haul, which also will be coming forward at some future date, as well as other uses to the east and north of this property. In addition to that, on Sunset Drive, you have the City of Las Vegas on the east side of the street, and you have the county operating on the west side of the street, and right across the street from this parcel is a used car lot, which has approximately close to, I would say, maybe 50, 60 used cars that are being sold at the corner, that has been operating there for quite some time as well. And so, what we're trying to do is basically clean up the zoning so that the operator will have an opportunity to continue to move forward with their business operations, and so for that, we'll entertain any questions that the Mayor and Council may have at this time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lowenstein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The proposed general plan designation zoning districts is intended to provide for heavy manufacturing industries in locations where they would be compatible with and not adversely impact adjacent land uses. This district is intended to be located away from all residential development. In addition, the proposed site development plans require variances to comply with Title 19 standards. Because of the adjacent residential uses and associated variances, staff finds the proposed general plan amendment rezoning and site development plans to be incompatible with the other properties in the area, and such staff has recommended denial of all applications. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is anyone else wishing to be heard on either 85, 86, 87, 88, and 90? Close the public hearing, and Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. If there's no comments from my peers, I'd like to make a motion for approval of item 87 and go along with the planning commission's recommendation. I mean, excuse me, 85.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from Council first? They're all okay. So, there's a motion on agenda item 85. Please vote, and please post. That carries. Agenda item 86, please.
I move for approval.
Thank you. This is motion to approve agenda item 86. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. 87, please.
I move for approval.
Thank you. This is motion to approve 87. It's a good idea to clean up all this zoning.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you. I really think it's a good move. Please vote, and please post.
Item 88, I move for approval.
That 87 just carried, now 88, please.
88, I move for approval.
Thank you. This is motion to approve agenda item 88. Please vote, please post. And that motion carries. Move on to 89, please.
Item 89, I move for approval.
Thank you. This is motion to approve 89. Please vote, and also post. That carries. And finally, agenda item 90.
And item 90, I move for approval.
Thank you very much. Motion to approve, finally, agenda item 90. Please vote, and please post.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mayor.
Good job. Motion carries. No, it needs to be done. Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item 91. RQR 76668, public hearing, applicant Silver Seem Properties, Inc., owner Meadows Lane Owner LLC. Possible action required review of approved special use permit, SUP 4807, for an existing 51-foot tall, 14-foot by 48, off-premise sign, 4490 Meadows Lane, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 1, with Councilman Knutson. Staff recommends denial. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant representative here?
Yes. Good afternoon, Your Honor, members...
Mr. Grownhour, before we get started, I just wanted to make a disclaimer that this is regarding a out-of-home billboard, and I'm owner of a billboard company, Creer Outdoor. We do not compete with this organization. I have any vested interest one way or the other, so I will not be, I will be voting on this matter.
You will not be voting?
I will be voting on this matter.
You will be voting?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, back to you, Mr. Grownhour, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the Council. Good afternoon. My name's Bob Grownhour, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the applicant in this matter, and I'm substituting for Jennifer Lazovich on this matter, so I'm going to go through fairly briefly with respect to this application. As you can see on your overhead, the location of the billboard that is for review, actually, you take a look here, it's right here where the Meadows Mall is located. This sign has been here adjacent to US 95 for over 11 years in this place. It's compatible and harmonious. If you're going to have billboard signs, the best place to have them is adjacent to freeways such as the US 95.
That's not the Stone Crab sign, is it?
Stone Crab is, I don't know which one it is.
It's been there forever.
There's a couple. But that's good advertising. You say, you say his job.
Been there forever.
Yes, yes. So, the sign has been there. Matter of fact, what's very important about this review is in November of 2018, the council approved a multifamily project on this property, and it was specifically discussed about whether or not to remove the billboard sign, and the council person at that time agreed to keep the billboard sign there. I have an approval letter here that shows, as he highlighted in yellow, that the existing off-premise sign shall be allowed to remain on the property. That issue was addressed and resolved in less than a year ago, so we're here on the requested review of the sign itself. So, we'd ask you to approve the request for review of the sign, since you've already really looked at this sign a year ago and already approved its location. There is a condition in here, I believe, condition number two in your staff report that says to review for three years. We'd ask to change that to five years. Now, the rationale for that is, is because you've already saw this in 2018, you see me standing here in 2019, and see me in a couple more years again here, is there so many reviews on the same property? If you give it about five years out here from today, it's more rational to take a look at the area, but outside of the multifamily here in the commercial in this area, comfortable that the compatible and harmonious location of the sign is not going to change, because you know it's going to be built here, but we would ask for that condition to be changed from three to five years, so you don't have to just see this exact sign keep coming back every year like you're approving the same thing.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lowenstein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, as indicated, that condition of approval was placed on by a former planning commissioner and approved by the city council, but since the previous review, the site has been rezoned to R4 zoning district in which off-premise signs as a use is prohibited. The sign therefore no longer meets Title 1912 requirements for non-residential location and zoning of off-premise signs and distant separations from residential uses, and now is considered a non-conforming use of land. Although located along a freeway, the sign is inappropriate for display adjacent to residential uses and thus incompatible with the surrounding area. Therefore, staff recommends denial. Staff doesn't have any disagreement with either the term of the length of the review of condition, but it's fully at the discretion of the councilman. Thank you.
Thank you. So, you say you do not object to a five-year review?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Public hearing, anyone wishing to be heard on agenda number 91? Close public hearing, and to you, Mr. Knutson.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and Mr. Grownhour, thank you for the presentation. With council support, I would move for approval, and with the condition of a five-year review at the request of the applicant.
Excellent.
Through you, Madam Mayor. So, it's just amendment of condition two to reflect five years versus three years?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, there's a motion. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, and happy birthday, happy 25th birthday, I believe it is, so looking good.
He's in front of us all the time. And now turn the meeting over to Mayor Protem for the next two items as they pertain to marijuana-related businesses, and one of my sons involved in the industry, so I will be voting as in abstention on both items. So, please, Mayor Protem, Fury, take over.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. SUP 76579, public hearing, applicant Nevada Organic Remedies LLC. Owner Bridge Group Investments LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,146-square-foot marijuana dispensary use at 1725 South Rainbow Boulevard, Suite Number 21, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 1. Councilman Knutson, the planning commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing. I now declare it open. Is the applicant present?
We're here.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, Council. Ryan Arnold here this afternoon representing the applicant. So, I'll jump right in. What you have before you is a 1,146-square-foot dispensary use permit. The, I'm going to cover the basics first, and then we'll get into some more detail. It meets all the requirements, both state and city, distance waivers, it meets all the necessary distance separations. I need to point out the site plan here, give you an orientation. Right here, we have, see if we can get on the overhead. There we go. Right here, we have Rainbow, and we have Oke. Oke being an 80-foot right-of-way, Rainbow being 150-foot right-of-way, two major arterials here in our valley. As you can see in the center, we're actually located more towards the northern end of it, further away from, I think, one of the critical streets for some of the neighbors, and that is Oke. Walking through some of the history here, when we first came, the planning commission, we were asked to go ahead and hold a neighborhood meeting, and so we obeyed the item, held our neighborhood meeting. We had a nice turnout from the neighbors. We listened to them, and during the planning commission process, we accepted a number of rather heavy conditions, if you will, and we're happy to do that, just to show to the neighborhood that we believe in our process, we believe in our company, we believe in our operations, that it will not have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood as, you know, they feel it will. And I'm happy to go through those conditions, but we accepted those, and it's conditions you won't see on any other application. The other thing I want to point out here is, on this site plan, I changed the orientation a little for you, but again, Rainbow, Oke, we back up to a 660-foot drainage area. I honestly can't come up with a better location for this type of use, between Rainbow, Oke, the drainage facility, and then similar uses in the area. If you look at this, we're surrounded by taverns, Ali's Liquor, other, you know, smoke shops. Again, I can't stress enough, it, to me, this seems as though it's the most compatible location we can come up with. Going through, or going back to some of the conditions that we had agreed to with the planning commission, and by the way, planning commission gave us unanimous approval, we agreed to limit our hours. Our hours will mirror that of Ali's Liquor across the street, and if you want me to read them into the record, I'm happy to. I think they were listed on our approval last time. We, we agreed to treat this, if, I know one of the concerns was, this is a 1,146-square-foot facility, small. There's concern that if we are successful, that immediately we're going to want to expand. I can't give you any guarantee whether that may or may not be the case, but what we can do is agree to do a major modification, and what that means is if we did an expansion up to a certain amount of square feet, we can do a minor modification, which is an easy process for us, but we've agreed to a major modification process, which means we would have to come back before this board for approval once again, which would give the neighbors an opportunity to air any sort of concerns they may have with our operation. Beyond that, we even agreed to a condition that said, bring us back in a year. Put us up here for a review. If we are having issues in the neighborhood, bring us back up here, and let's review it, and if we're that bad, yank it. So, we believe in our process that much that we're willing to go that far on accepting those type of conditions. So, there's a number of other things I could get into nitty-gritty, but I think that covers the basics. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I know there's some neighbors here that want to speak, and we're happy to come back up and answer questions after that as well. Thank you.
Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, Protem, so the subject site does, as indicated, comply with all minimum distance separation requirements as set forth in Title 19, and staff finds that the use can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with those existing surrounding land uses. Therefore, staff has recommended approval of the special use permit. The conditions that the representative indicated are in the backup, as added by the planning commission, regarding hours of operation, security, the amendment process, and a required review to go before a public hearing at planning commission. If you have any questions, thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Okay, so what I'll do is, since we have several folks, we'll limit it to two minutes each, and please make sure you state your name, and then also, if you hear someone say something that you were going to say, just ditto it. Okay.
Thank you so much, Zan Hyer, 2001 Homeview Court. We appreciate your time, and sorry to come here on my babysitting day with my granddaughter, but thank you for your patience with her. Our concern as a neighborhood is, first of all, I'm not representing just myself, but the six registered voters in my home and four generations of Las Vegans. My mom is here who lives right across the street from Rainbow Family Park and walks there every morning, and then my children are some of those registered voters, and my granddaughter represents the 10 grandchildren that are often in the neighborhood well, so that's the group that I'm representing. We're just concerned with the saturation of our neighborhood. Our neighborhood has not received the protections that other neighborhoods have received from these types of businesses. We've had way too many, and they're really changing the personality and the safety in our neighborhood. We'd like to keep it a neighborhood. In the planning commission, in the planning meeting, they compared our neighborhood to a neighborhood, to the strip, when they said your saturation's fine. We're not the strip. We're a neighborhood, and we would really like to keep it a nice, safe, happy, family neighborhood. In the neighborhood meeting, they also talked about this business, talked about all the safety and security measures they were going to take to protect their business, but I didn't hear anything about what they're going to do to protect our parks, our schools, and our neighborhoods from the consequences that will follow, so we appreciate your concern on this matter. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Julie Christensen. I live at 2000 Homeview Court. Thank you for hearing our concerns. We are now airing our concerns. We want you to hear us, not in a year, but we're here today, and it's a big commitment of time for us all who are working businessmen to be here so often, trying to fight for our neighborhood, so I hope you appreciate the time that we've put into this. We really care about it. We built a home in this neighborhood 31 years ago, and we chose this area because it was half-acre residential, private cul-de-sacs, to keep our families safe. We've been committed to developing and protecting its unique beauty, safety, and sense of community. That's why we're all here today. We love and care about the quality of our neighborhood. It seems that you believe, because we have a bar and a liquor store on Rainbow and Oke, though we tried to protest that too, that our fate is already set, and we have to accept every negative influence that comes into our neighborhood now, because we have these other existing stores and businesses, but that's not who we are. Let me tell you what else is in our neighborhood. We have 17 schools within two miles of this dispensary location. Bonanza High School, where kids are zoned, is less than a half a mile away. High schools have day and nighttime activities. Oke is not a main access street, it's a midsection street, but it is the main access street to Bonanza High School for buses, students driving, and students walking. There are 18 churches within two miles of this location. One, the Bahai Center, is 114 steps away. There are other churches all over our area. There are seven parks within two miles of this location. Rainbow Family Park has baseball fields and youth teams. It is 241 steps away from this dispensary. This is a major concern I have, because I'm already smelling marijuana as I walk through that park. This business would bring outside people inside our neighborhood, and I fear crime and traffic will increase. I think it would be a negative influence on our neighborhood. With all the problems associated with marijuana right now, the newest is...
Are you close, because you're out of time? Because you're out of time. Are you close to your two minutes?
I am close.
Okay.
I'm just saying, with marijuana, I've read lately, there's been mold, there's been yeast, there's been THC manipulation. It seems like we need to regulate this industry more, rather than exponentially increasing it everywhere. I know it's a cash cow, but, you know, there's a reason that it's not in hotels and casinos. It has a detriment effect on the area, so why should we have to sustain it?
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council members and Mayor Goodman. My name is Diane Harrington, and I am the Vice President of the Rainbow Family Park Neighborhood Association, a group of about 600 homes located in Ward 1, and I'm here in opposition of SUP 76579, the proposed marijuana dispensary. As already mentioned, we're a very family-centered community with 18 schools, 17 churches, four parks, and many child-centered locations in our neighborhood. As Julie mentioned, these locations hold day and night activities, and we do not want a business that is not compatible with our neighborhood and all the activities that are going on there at all times. With schools, churches, parks, and other child-related locations, we do not consider another dispensary in our community in the best interest of the, quote, "health, welfare, and safety" of our community, as the ordinance governing the establishments of these businesses states. My next comments are not about the legality of marijuana, but about the effects of marijuana and the correlation that it has to Ward 1, our Ward 1 community in the neighborhood. According to the CDC, marijuana affects areas of the brain that control body movement, balance, coordination, memory, and judgment, and it goes on to say that driving while impaired by marijuana negatively affects a number of skills required for safe driving. I won't list all the skills that are impaired according to this article, only that it says it can last for days or weeks. The owners of Bridgewater, of Bridge Group Investments LLC are providing security for their store, but will their customers be safe and responsible as they enter and leave our community? This business does not belong in a family-centered neighborhood and the walking and driving paths of schools, churches, parks, and other child-centered locations. Placing the business at the main entry and exit of our community filled with family and child-centered events and locations is dangerous and wrong. We do not want an influx of potentially impaired drivers and customers looking for locations in our area to use their products or trying to find resources to purchase for a cash-only-based business.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Keith Thomas. I live at 1561 Windhaven Circle. I appreciate Mayor Goodman, your time, and Mayor Pro Tem, and the other members of the council. I appreciate working with, particularly with Ward 1 over the past couple of years on behalf of the Rainbow Family Park Neighborhood Association. This is a dated map, but I wanted to show it anyway. We represent, this right here is the location of the proposed SUP. We represent the homeowners who live in this section right here. It's called the Rainbow Family Park Neighborhood Association. These pins represent the known marijuana dispensaries that we're aware of. There's another one I see on the program today, right down here by, just east of the college. But we've worked with, for a couple of years, with the Neighborhood Partner Fund for the City of Las Vegas in obtaining grant funds to help improve the livability of our neighborhood. And we're concerned that this particular application, at this particular location, is an incompatible use and should work for the denial of this particular application. As you look at the actual site where the proposed location is going to be, it's, here's the retention base that they're talking about. This is the little strip center where the location is going to be. Probably not mentioned so far is that in Suite 17, now Suite 21 is where this is proposed to be, Suite 17 is a pediatric medical clinic. So just very, I mean, just short steps away, we have a medical clinic for children. And the other thing, in this particular strip shopping center, there are two layers of parking there, each of which have lots of speed bumps on them. So traffic going through there is very slow. So what I see happening is the same thing that happens to me when I go there to take my iPhone to get it repaired, is I don't go back out to Oke this way. I just go behind it and just speed right along there, and then I get out here to Oke. Now, Oke is probably a mischaracterization to call it a major arterial. It is not. Now, Rainbow, I believe, has six lanes. Oke has three lanes with bike lanes on both sides of the street. It's not designed for heavy traffic. It is also not a through street. It stops at Durango to the west.
Sir, are you close?
Yep, very close. So it's, for these reasons, I'd recommend denial of this on behalf of the Rainbow Family Park Neighborhood Association, the 700 members in that who are all opposed to this particular application. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I have something to enter into the record, if I may. I'll be asleep, this is a clerk. Reach it on. I might add, yes, thank you. I might add one. I moved into the area some 30 years ago. We had horses, speaking of horses. We no longer have any horses, but we now have pot dispensary issues in our backyard. I must say that I think just about everything-
I'm sorry. I know who you are, but we all need to know who you are, so I need you to say your name.
I'll further record Kyle Stevens, Monte Cristo Way. And so I might add that this has become kind of a 7-Eleven sort of a thing, kind of a McDonald's kind of thing, almost, in our particular world of Ward 1. By my count, this is dispensary number six. Dispensary number six. All other points have basically been taken, so I'll be brief and appreciate your time and consideration in opposition to this. I might also add, if I may, those in opposition in the chamber, please stand. Our local neighbors. We love Las Vegas. We love our parks. We love our neighborhood. We appreciate the work you do. And I'll turn the time, if I may, to Mr. Benson.
Mayor Goodman, Mayor Pro Tem, Fiore, council members. My name is Lloyd Benson. I live at 7142 Avenue, probably two and a half blocks from the dispensary. Fighting a cold, pardon me. One of the things the applicant said initially that kind of got my attention is when he started, he said, you know, this is, this is a place that's very conducive for what we do. There's so many taverns here. There's so many smoke shops here. There's, there's an adult bookstore across the street. There's liquor stores in the area. You know, I don't know what he's thinking, but we don't consider ourselves a trashy neighborhood. These might be businesses that comply with all the regulations that staff says that you comply with, but I've lived in my neighborhood for 30 years, and never have I had to come before the City Council to complain about what's going on in the neighborhood. When Councilman Tarkanian was here, she helped us immensely with the-
Short-term rentals.
There you go. The short-term rentals. And that's another thing that we're dealing with there. And I have to say, my neighbors have done a good job in expressing our concern, so I'm not going to get into that because I know that Michelle is keeping an eye on the clock. So I will say this. My main concern is safety. I'm in a business, another thing that caught my attention was what Councilman Anthony said, when he said to, I think it was the city safety person who was up here talking about the safety issues, he said, make sure you hire people that are qualified. In my business, we rent equipment. We're in the construction business, and it is so difficult, not only to staff through the normal recruiting efforts because of the low labor, the low unemployment, but it's hard to find people who pass the drug test. I don't know why we have to proliferate the marijuana issues like we are. Look at some of the researches, reports that have come back from Colorado. One of them I read just in closing-
It's okay. So listen, Mr. Benson, Mr. Stevens yielded you his time, so you have a minute and a half, so go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. So one of the, Colorado's been down this road for many years, and they've had a lot of time to dissect and to research some of the issues that they had to deal with, with marijuana. One of the reports is that they found that every dollar that gained, that they got through marijuana sales, they spent $4.50 to mitigate the effects of marijuana. I don't know why we think that marijuana is the cure-all for our budgets and our shortfalls in our budgets. I think it's a bad deal, and I appreciate your time and the opportunity I've had to come and express my feelings to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got some great neighbors that have spoken to you. My name's Bill Harrington, Mr. Mayor, Honored. I just want to quote Councilman Anthony. He said something great today. He said, don't hire knuckleheads for the Public Safety Department. And that's essentially our argument. We don't want a bunch of knuckleheads who are, a few of whom will be currently using marijuana as they drive through our neighborhood, particularly down Oke. Oke, again, is not an arterial. It's got those bike paths on either side, just a two-lane highway. A lot of people walk that way, a lot of people bicycle that way, and a certain percentage of people who go to those stores are going to be using it at the time they're at the stores, and they're going to be traveling through our neighborhoods, whether that's 10% or 50% or whatever the percent is. We don't want any of those people under the influence driving through our neighborhoods. And so for a safety concern, we would like to keep the knuckleheads out of the neighborhood. I'm a physician. I don't particularly like the use of these kind of substances anytime, but let's try and keep them to major areas where they're a little safer anyway than in the neighborhoods where kids are going up and down those streaks on their bikes. And I will turn the rest of my time over to Kevin Christensen, so he'll have more time if he needs it.
Madam Mayor, Madam Pro Tem, members of council, my name is Kevin Christensen. I'm an attorney. I represent the Home Court Land Association, which is composed of some of whom you've heard already. We have a home in the area. We also have an office in the area, and we've been before you before on similar applications. We appreciate your time today. What you've heard is a summary of the saturation of the area with dispensary locations, an intense youth activity corridor. There's probably not a more intense youth activity corridor in the city than right there at Oke and Rainbow. There are 2,052 students at Bonanza High School, all of which are young and impressionable. The traffic in the area doesn't need another vice distraction. These are young, vulnerable minds. You've heard opinions and scientific data with regard to the adverse effect that can occur through its use, particularly for these high school students, young adults, and CSN students who are just a hop, skip away from Bonanza High School. And so what you've heard is evidence. This applicant has not submitted any evidence. He submitted a bare application. That application simply says, we fit within the distance separation requirements. Well, that's not a qualifier. That's a disqualifier when you're within those parts. Your ordinance is specific under special use permits, and it says under 19.16.10 Part L., in order to approve a proposed special use application, the City Council must determine that, Part D., approval of the special use permit at the siting question will not be inconsistent with or compromise the public health, safety, and welfare. That's the finding you have to make. That's the conclusion you have to draw. We're asking you now, use your hearts and minds as a body with significant authority. You drafted the ordinance like a legislature. You have now the executive responsibility to administer that ordinance, and now, as a body, you're considering how it should be interpreted. So you have legislative and executive and now judicial responsibilities. And in that situation, we think that you have an obligation in your minds and heart of hearts to decide whether there is any probable deleterious effect on the health, safety, and welfare of citizens like those that you've heard of today. One last, one last comment. I submitted an opposition paper yesterday. I have the original here with me. I have copies, if you'd like to see them. I included in that opposition a warning against the appearance of impropriety. In July, in this body, you started to talk about the appropriateness of a density regulation. And one of the, one of the members of the body indicated on the record, and it's in your minutes, he wished the dispensary was coming to Ward 1. To me, that's a predisposition to approval, and we know how City Council works. There is a significant amount of deferral to a ward counselor, but we're asking you to look at this application on its merits. The source is already down the street. This is the second one within a mile. We ask you to deny it because I don't believe in good faith that you can make that finding that's required by your ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item?
I'm Judy Tobler. I live at 7251 Delray Avenue. I have lived in this house for 30 years. Prior to that, just a mile away. My husband is fourth-generation Southern Nevadan, and we love Las Vegas. We love Nevada. We are definitely opposed. I can't really reiterate more than what has been said. It's just that if we have a bar, we have a liquor store, a love store, and all that stuff, now we deserve a marijuana dispensary. I have grandchildren in Colorado. I cannot say enough against the use of marijuana. When I see what happens to my grandchildren in school, one son just goes to school four days because they can't afford to have them to go to school five days, and here we pass this so it can prove our schools. Where's the money? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item?
My name is Chris Benson, and I live at 7142 Avenue, and I am for, I am against this, the marijuana dispensary for all of the things that have already been stated for the purposes. Just even in my own personal experience, I never try and access exactly on Rainbow because it's so busy, and so that makes you have to know that going down Oke and through the rest of the neighborhood would definitely be a deterrent. But what I found really interesting is I came to, when the Planning Commission approved this, and on our way home, I said, let me drive through. Show me where this, show me where this place is. And at that time, they were billing this dispensary as a boutique dispensary at 1,000 square feet. So we drove through and drove through the place that it's going to be, and the place that it's going to be is probably half-empty. And I said to my husband at that time, I said, Lloyd, there's no doubt that they're picking this place so they can expand. And I found it interesting that in there, without him even being approved yet, they're already talking about coming back next year if they expand. And there isn't anybody with a brain that can't drive past that place that they've selected and know that this is not going to be a boutique dispensary that is already being planned for the expansion. And for this and all the other reasons that have been stated, I'm against this.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard? So if there's anyone else, you guys can come up to the mic. There's three of them. Okay.
Hi. I am Julia Stevens on Monte Cristo. I live on Monte Cristo, and I wasn't going to speak, but I find it really interesting that in the '70s section, I can't remember what, you were talking about approving a park for a community, an equestrian park, and how important it was to you to have water for the horses and the flies that might be there to disrupt the neighborhood. And I'm thinking, here we are, asked- And I'm thinking, here we are, asking for the multiple times to please not let this be in our neighborhood, and it seems to be upon deaf ears, and I'm hoping that you will really consider the neighborhood and the people who are here, who are really opposed of this and really do not want any more, if possible, of this kind of business in our neighborhood. I appreciate you listening, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Okay, seeing none, before I close public hearing, would you like to say something, Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, if you don't mind, we want to address a few issues real quick. I think I have a tremendous amount of respect for this neighborhood. Obviously, they're very well organized, and they're on point. The challenge for us is a lot of the themes you're hearing are just straight-out fears of the use. The people voted for it. We all know that. We have regulations to abide by. We're doing that. Going back to one of the more recent speakers, I think she twisted what I said about our planned expansion. We have no planned expansion. What I said was the exact opposite. That is, if we do decide to plan any sort of expansion, we're agreeing for a full meeting before this board, not going through administrative process. So we're actually putting a much more strict requirement on ourselves to hopefully give them some satisfaction. The last thing I want is, I'd like to bring up Brandon Wiegand. He's one of the principals with the company. I just want him to touch really quickly on some of the elements of the actual location. I glossed over the fact of it is a boutique and some of those pieces, and I'll have him hit that very quickly.
Hello, Brandon Wiegand. Last name is W-I-E-G-A-N-D. Regional General Manager for Nevada Organic Remedies is doing business as The Source. Pardon me. Get this open for you guys. So as Ryan stated, I wanted to touch on a couple topics. One, the idea of the boutique property. Our dispensary is right down the road. It's The Source Dispensary. It's about 5,200 square feet total. It is a store that serves many brands. What we are looking at this location for, again, is a boutique store. It's a brand that's going to have a store. We don't anticipate major traffic increases. We chose a small site on purpose, and we've accepted the conditions that would prevent us from being allowed to expand without going through a major modification. In addition, there's concerns brought up about security. Those were conditioned in our planning approval as well. We have the entire property riddled with cameras. It's monitored 24/7, either onsite when we shut down. That goes to off-site monitoring. That's an improvement for the neighborhood. It'll also help increase, and we've seen crime decrease at our other centers where we locate a dispensary, just because of the surveillance aspect that's present. In addition, there's some concerns brought up about smell and odor. As you guys may know, the city of Las Vegas does not allow us to package onsite. Everything that we bring into this building, we prepackaged. That should cut down on any odors that would come out significantly. We also put in a hepophyltration and odor filtration. We've used that at other dispensaries and have an odor mitigation plan that was submitted with our application as well. Our customer base, you know, I've heard a lot of fears about who our customer is and what's going on in the neighborhood. Our customer is the cross-section of society. The average age of our customer is 41 years old. It's starting to skew female. It's not, I think, the scary, you know, young pothead that a lot of individuals seem to perceive are our customers. We serve every member of society, and my staff is every member of society, you know, from 20s into retirees. Last was onsite consumption, and that's a concern of ours as well, and it's something that we work to mitigate. We educate all of our team. We have security and surveillance onsite to prevent that, and we make sure that everybody understands, just like a liquor store, you can purchase the product, but it's imperative that you take it home and enjoy it in the privacy of your own home. And I just reiterate again, we meet all the distance separation requirements. We really, we tried to find a site that was going to allow us to seek approval as quickly as possible with as few issues as possible. We're under the gun to get our license perfected before December 4th. We tried to find a location that wasn't going to ask for special treatment, wasn't going to ask for special conditions, that meets all the requirements, and I think that's what we've done with this location. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions that may come up.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Down here?
Down here, yes. Do you have a question? Councilwoman Seaman?
Yes. So I'm going to defer to the councilman on this of the ward, but if it does pass, are you saying that part of the special use permit, you have, you will be reviewed in a year?
You know what? I'll defer to staff.
Staff, let me ask staff. Okay.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, through you. Yes, Councilwoman. So one of the conditions that the Planning Commission has already attached to this request is that if it is approved, it shall have a required review 12 months from the date of the business license issuance, and that will be a public hearing before the Planning Commission. So they will be back for a review in 12 months in a public hearing setting if this application is approved, 12 months from the time that their license is approved.
Okay. And I want to thank all of you for coming and sharing your concerns. I know you've waited a long time to share those. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council? Okay. I'm going to, yes, Councilman Stafford. Oh, wait, and Queer. Okay, we have two here.
Thank you. I'm not sure what the motion is going to be by Councilman Knutson, but everybody knows my record when it comes to marijuana. I was pretty vocal about it, but that's a long time ago. It's legal now, and I've been, I think I've been very, very consistent when it came to my vote for a special use permit, whether it's in my ward or anybody else's ward. If the neighborhood that the dispensary is going into doesn't care, then I don't care, and I'll support it. If the neighborhood where the dispensary is going into doesn't want it, then I have supported the neighbors. So there's no reason for me to change my consistency today. So I'll be voting, I will not support this particular special use permit. Thank you.
Councilman Queer?
Thank you. I don't think there's a conflict just out of abundance of caution. My brother lives in that Section 10 area, but I don't think it's any conflict whatsoever considering it's on Rainbow and Oki, and it's a very high-traffic commercial area with a tremendous amount of businesses and traffic, et cetera, but I will be supporting, I will be voting for this item.
Thank you.
I should say, I should be voting on this item, not necessarily for this item. Argue against it yet.
Thank you, Councilman Queer. Anyone else? I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Knutson.
Madam Pro Tem, thank you. And for those of you who waited for hours, I wish we had a better process because I wish we could have done something like this earlier to prevent waiting. This is a super tough issue. This has been going on for almost since I started, and I want to highlight a conversation that I had with Mr. Stevens because I think it will help clarify how I'm going to get to the recommendation I'm going to make today. So I grew up in Salt Lake City, Utah. I'm probably more conservative than most anybody would think. I don't think I voted for question two. I'm not super supportive of marijuana. I had never smoked marijuana in my entire life. When the state voted it in, I was kind of indifferent because I've never been around it. Upon campaigning, I was asked to visit multiple dispensaries and the places where they grow, and I was shocked by what I saw because I went into them and I saw people that I sat on boards with at three different sites. I saw people that I knew, and they weren't jumping up and down that I saw them. They were kind of coming in there to make a purchase and then walk out. The people that I saw in those dispensaries on the tours that I've been on looked like you. And so the knucklehead comment always makes me anxious because I hear that, that they don't always say knuckleheads. Sometimes they say potheads. But it makes me anxious because no one is going to show up if we have a dispensary in Councilwoman Diaz's ward near Naked City. No one shows up to fight that. And so I struggle with this. I really, really struggled with this because I really don't want to create a situation where we're only approving them in one part of our community. And so the data that I looked at, after listening, Mr. Stevens, I really appreciated our conversation because I think on many things we're aligned. The data that I looked at is in Ward 1, there's 60% of the ward that voted in support of marijuana, and maybe they didn't think that it was going to be in their neighborhood, but they voted in support of it. So the morality of marijuana is not for me to decide at this point. The voters have already decided that. The health impacts of marijuana, I think I've seen them with my daughter in the NICU. I saw children coming in, and I think there are health implications that make me anxious. But again, in Clark County, this 56.4% of people voted in support of marijuana. In Ward 1, it was 60%, and in many of the neighborhoods, not including you all that showed up and many of your neighbors, but in the neighbors surrounding this particular spot, it goes up to 70% voted in support of marijuana. When I was on the campaign trail, it was the question I got many, many, many times about my support or lack thereof of cannabis, and more than not, people supported cannabis. It aligned pretty closely with the 70%. I was also asked many, many times on the campaign trail about helping people find jobs. And so I've asked multiple dispensaries about the job creation, and it is a place where people have employment and good employment with good benefits, and that was a far more greater concern that I heard on the campaign than anything else was, how do I find jobs? And that's one of the questions I'll ask Mr. Arnold to talk about is how many jobs this will create because I think it does matter. I want to talk about a couple more things. In that particular shopping center, it was noted that there's a pediatrician. That is my daughter's pediatrician. I've been there many, many, many times, and that shopping center is almost always empty. And so I see a big part of our job as City Council is to create the conditions for economic growth. In Ward 1, I've talked about this many, many times, is that much of Ward 1 is empty buildings and for lease signs, and that scares me because I think that leads to challenging conditions that bring about more knuckleheads than a marijuana store would. And so I think it's my job to create economic conditions where the area can succeed. I also want to point out that I live about a mile from a dispensary, and I did not know there's a dispensary there until I was told about coming up to this item. I found out about it about a week ago. I don't see the impacts it has on the neighborhood around it. And so because of those reasons, I would move for approval of this item with the given conditions that were stated on the record, and I want to ask Mr. Arnold if he can talk about the employment because I am thinking about that, too.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll bring Brandon back up and speak on that.
Thank you. Again, Brandon Wiegand for the record, Regional General Manager for Nevada Organic Remedies is doing business as The Source. This dispensary at 1146, 1,146 square feet, I think our projections show around 35 employees total for the store. That wouldn't include support staff that would also build at the corporate level. Our minimum paying job, I think right now, is around 13, 13.50 an hour, and our GM for a store is making, I believe, around 85 and up from there. So these are, as you alluded to, very well-paying jobs, respectable jobs, and highly sought-after jobs.
Thank you. So this is a super tough issue. I think just the conversation Mr. Stevens, you and I had, again, I think as a council, I'm going to be moving forward with a request to create some distance separation because I do think this isn't the only one that's asked to come into your neighborhood. There's been multiple requests of me and this council for many, many more dispensaries. And so I think that's responsible of me and my olive branch, essentially, to say, I'm going to request this council think about a distant separation so that we don't cluster them. Last council meeting, the Councilwoman Diaz talked about and voted on in support of low-income housing coming into a neighborhood, and the feelings from the neighbors were very, very similar. I'm doing my best to manage the responsibility or the expectations of neighbors, but also manage the expectations of our entire community. And so it's a super, super tough issue, and I appreciate the time you've been here. I am going to make a motion for approval. The conditions that Mr. Arnold put on the record, I want to ask Mr. Summerfield if you could read those into the record.
Of course, sir. Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, through you. Councilman, those conditions that were added by the Planning Commission on this item include hours of operation shall be limited to the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Friday through Saturday. A second condition, prior to the issuance of a business license, a security system will be installed that is active 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Third condition, any proposed expansion of the existing use shall be treated as a major amendment and require a public hearing. And finally, the added required review, a required review shall be conducted 12 months from the date of business license issuance at a public hearing before the Planning Commission. And those were added at Planning Commission and agreed to by the applicant.
Thank you. With those conditions, I would move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please vote and post. That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 93, SUP 76892, public hearing. Applicant Lone Mountain Partners LLC. Owner Nanomed Inc. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 3784 square-foot marijuana dispensary use at 5240 West Charleston Boulevard. C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward Knutson. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing. I now declare it open. Is the applicant present?
Yes, I am. Lucy Stewart, 1930 Village Center Circle, representing the applicant. And this is an application for a dispensary with similar conditions that have been imposed at the Planning Commission. I think we are treated similarly, and so we've agreed to the conditions that were imposed by the Planning Commission and the ones imposed by staff, which included the hours of operation, restricting them from Monday through, excuse me, Sunday through Thursday and then Friday through Saturday, and that we have to have our security system installed before any business license is issued, and that, again, if there were to be any expansion, that it would be a major amendment, and notices would go out to the neighbors, and that we would have a required review in addition to the standard conditions that were imposed. So we appreciate staff's recommendation of approval and the Planning Commission, and we respectfully request your approval.
Mr. Summerfield?
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, there are no confirmed protected uses located within the required distance separation areas. It should be noted that there is an existing martial arts studio that serves both adults and kids. However, the owner of that establishment has indicated by instrument that they serve both adults and kids equally, so it's not a majority minors within this required distance area. The subject site does comply, therefore, with all minimum distance separation requirements set forth by Title 1912, and therefore can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with those existing surrounding land uses. Staff has recommended approval of the request with conditions as indicated by the applicant. They have the similar added conditions from the Planning Commission with regard to hours of operation, expansion, required review, and the security element.
Thank you, Mr. Summerfield. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there anyone up here? Okay, Councilman Knutson.
Madam Pro Tem, thank you. I wish I could just say ditto. That would be a lot faster. For this particular item, I think this location is probably more suitable for the area. And again, my concentration right now is relieving some of the pressure from Councilwoman Diaz's ward, and so I think this is good for the overall community. I appreciate you being here today, and with that, I'll move for approval with the conditions that Mr. Summerfield put on the record.
Thank you, Councilman Knutson. I have a couple of councilmembers off, so maybe we will give Councilwoman Seaman a minute to return. Councilwoman Seaman? There's a motion on the floor to approve item number 93. Please vote. And the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Back on schedule here. And I know, you know, it's an interesting thing, sitting and listening to our councils as we go through these motions and what's going on. It's very interesting, because so many times over the years, I've wondered how everybody's voting, because we are prohibited from soliciting votes as we serve as city council members. And so, as Councilman Creer responded earlier on, on the previous vote, not this previous, but the previous one to that, and then he corrected himself. He said, "I would be voting in favor." He said, "No, I would support, and then we'll make up my mind how I'm voting after I hear the council person." I had always wished, at the times I didn't have a decision, that I could know who's going to move in what direction. So, I encourage council, not, as you make your comments, that's fine, and indicate your vote, it's fine, but it really does help the rest of us to know where the votes are going to lie, which I don't think we want to know that, because it makes us think in our own minds and vote truthfully without the help of somebody else. So, it was just an interesting experience, listening to all this. And as you examined it, Councilwoman Knutson, I still didn't know until you got to the end where you were going to be voting. And I thought you did an excellent job on it, but it did bring forward to me how I wish I could look in each of your minds and know how you're voting before I cast my vote on some issues. So, we really shouldn't spill that in a general feeling. Yeah, no, I mean, really. If anybody understood what I was talking about, which doesn't really matter. Okay, we're on to agenda item 94. Set the date on any appeals or required public hearings instructing the clerk, city clerk, please, to set those public hearing items. Appeals from city planning commission meetings, dangerous buildings, nuisance-led arraignments.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, we are into our final and second. Citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda scheduled for action. So, if you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. It is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? And we'll set the clock at two minutes.
Daniel Braystead, 1103 Lewis. Madam Mayor, city council members, two items. One, the message system that I've used to try to contact some of you is not working. I sent a couple of messages. I didn't get a response, so I sent a message to the internet supervisor, and I didn't get a response from that. So, after this meeting, do I go to the fifth floor, or do I go to the basement to talk to them about that?
To speak with whom, please?
What's that?
With whom did you want to speak?
Somebody that can figure out what's happening to my messages that I send to the city council.
I'm going to ask from the clerk's staff, Ms. Campbell, if you could go up and get the particulars, so we can address his question to the right department, rather than have you try five more extensions and go to visit more people. So, Ms. Campbell here will come talk to you on that.
Thank you.
But after your other comments.
And then, the other item, I want to address this homeless situation. I want to address this middle-class situation. I want to address this wealthy situation. We have computer labs throughout this valley that are owned by the public, and they are closed most of the time. The computer lab in this building is going to be closed Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. What I'm advocating is that all public computer labs be moved to an outside wall, and that a second entrance be made into that computer lab, so that after-hours bonded, cleared individuals can bring a church group, a family, a company, and they can bring it in, and they can run classes for the homeless at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning. And when I've run labs, computer training like this at Central Telephone, the individuals start teaching them each other, and they can develop jobs. So, somebody can come in there and learn how to do 3D printing, and then their program can be taken out to the sin shop or other places, and they can produce it there. They can do signs, and they can take it to a sign shop, and they can cut it out, and they can make revenue there. Banks. I think a bank would be there, and they'd do training, because they'd want to teach them how to use funnels. People in these funnels are making grungles of money, and so, a bank brings in 20 people, and one of them may have it. May I continue?
Yes, please go ahead, because I'm going to ask, designate, probably Mr. Adams, where this idea could go. So, it seems like a reasonable idea, but there's a cost, because we have to staff things and everything.
Exactly. And the individuals putting the money up and asking to use it, they could either get grants, or other companies can do it, or they could pay a fee. So, to me, that's the best way to help the homeless, is to, first off, encourage them to learn to type properly. See, if they go to a library, they have to sit in there, and they've got these hoods, and they can't talk.
They're not open usually at night either. So, this might be something, and I don't know, Mr. Adams, do you want to defer and have him meet with Mr. Chavantes, or whether, where do you want us to go? To see if it sounds like a reasonable idea, and I know there's a cost involved with everything.
Let me take this to my team and see where it goes. I mean, my mind's swimming, there are a lot of thoughts about it. It may not be as simple as it sounds, but certainly, we'll work with our team on giving it a best effort.
I appreciate it. The other item is that it could be used by NORAD and Cyber Command. Let's say there's 300 computer labs just in Las Vegas at the university and private. They may need that in Cyber Command.
Well, the hard thing is it's staffing and keeping the security. That's the most important thing first. So, Mr. Adams, if you would give your business card or director to him, so he can get a contact. And then, also, my other suggestion would be, in fact, too, then you can actually ask Mr. Adams, we could do two things at once, how to contact why you weren't hearing from somebody specifically regarding.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So, Ms. Campbell, he's going to work with, he has Scott Adams' card, and Scott then can respond to both questions, where to direct him. So, he's getting responses, because he's not.
Yeah, if he emails me, it should get through.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public comment down and move on to council member recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the council unless the subject's in the agenda and scheduled for action. So, let's start with the birthday girl.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And hopefully, we'll see my slides coming up. I'm finally catching up to my peers in Wards 2 and 6. So, we just want to extend invitation to everyone, including city staff, to go and enjoy Hispanic Heritage Month. It did start on the 15th of September, and will continue through the 15th of October. And our Hispanic Heritage Committee here as a city has done a fabulous job putting together some events for our community, so please come and enjoy some coffee, Latin American brews. I'm going to be there, so take a little break and come on over and have some snacks and some coffee on us. So, we'll see you tomorrow, starting 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Another Hispanic Heritage Month event that's coming up is on Thursday, September 26th, also 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., but this one will take place at the East Las Vegas Community Center off of 2851 East Bonanza. And it will give the community lots of resources, lots of information about different departments in our city, and we really want small business owners, residents, to come out and just take in all of this information, so that you can, I guess, have more information on how you navigate the business licensing, the planning and development licensing, and lots more, like the municipal courts and whatnot. We will have lots of city staff there. Next, we have a movie in the park coming up. Yay, I'm so excited. This is the first movie in the park. I get to be hosting for our great community in Ward 3, and we're going to be hosting it out of Justin Myron E. Levitt J.C. Park, 2100 East St. Louis Avenue, and we will be featuring Aladdin, the new Aladdin. So, join us there. It starts after 7:00 p.m., and we'll have water and popcorn, hopefully for everyone. Depends if we have a huge, successful turnout, we'll figure out what we're going to do then. The next thing I wanted to announce is we're working hard with One Stop Career Center and the Latin Chamber of Commerce on a job fair, so we're calling it the Great Career and Job Match. It will be out of the East Las Vegas Library, Saturday, October 5th, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And also, I wanted to put it on your radar that we do have a resume writing workshop that will happen the Thursday before Saturday, the 5th. So, if you need to renew your resume, there will be people there to help you revamp, and just basically take a fresh look at your resume to make sure that it's matching up with your job goals. And then, on Saturday, we're hoping to match your resumes with a potential employer and hopefully send you out the door with a new job. We also want to invite all the families for career exploration. We're working on great community partners, city partners, to come out and offer our youth many career avenues they can start thinking and entertaining about what they see themselves doing. And my last announcement pertains to the park conversation we had off of Harrison Marion. There are two parks that we aren't searching for names for. One is off of Washington, between Lamb and Nellis, I believe. That's one park. That one's almost done, almost complete, and we're hoping that you can go to our City of Las Vegas Link Ward 3 parks to offer suggestions on what we should name these parks, the same for the Harrison Marion. I want to hear from the community what you want your parks named. So, please, you can do it online. We're posting it on social media, or you can call 702-229-4623 and offer us fabulous ideas. And that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you very much, and have a glorious dinner, again.
Thank you. And I want to thank all my colleagues for the amazing flowers I got, and my cake, and all the staff that have shared birthday wishes with me. It really makes my heart full, and I'm so appreciative of that, and to many more, I hope.
Wonderful. Thank you. And Councilman Knutson?
Thank you very much. And I wanted to start off by recognizing the Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance. They'll be hosting their annual dinner and awards this September 26th, so I'll be there as a member of their board. And then, actually, this is for the council, because we don't get to talk very often, so I figure I could do it here. I've been meeting individually with each of the principals in my ward, and I get independently from each other requests for support around trauma-informed training. And I just wanted to bring it to everyone's awareness, that the impacts of poverty in our community are impacting children significantly within the school system. And so, I know Councilwoman Diaz has experience with that, but many of the teachers in my ward are asking for help and assistance in dealing with children who are struggling with trauma. And so, I'm going to be working, and I'm grateful to the Department of Youth Development and Social Innovation on strategies around that, if it comes up in anybody else's conversations. I'm also working with the Public Works Department on the traffic around some of the schools, and so I'm grateful for Gina and Mike for spending time with me and talking to the schools and the city. With that, I am grateful for my colleagues' time today. Thank you so much.
Well, we're delighted you are serving your community so well. And it's always challenging, because we always have issues, and you've got to weigh the best you can with the information you have. So, Mayor Pro Tem, you're next in line there.
Thank you so much. So, this Friday, we are going to be meeting at the YMCA from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 to address any of our constituent concerns. Our last meetup, Meet with Michelle over at Centennial, the Y, was very, very successful. And it was so successful, this Friday, I'm schlepping some more staff with me out there to make sure we answer all questions on the spot. Then, on Wednesday, September 25th, I'm very excited, we are having our International Innovation Center at the Las Vegas Grand Opening, right here at our Bank of America Building at 300 South Fourth Street, Suite 180, Las Vegas. Please join me there. It's so, so, so exciting, getting all of these companies downtown. So, I'm very excited. We have a company that I recruited out of Paris that's doing quite well, so very excited about it. And then, we have our movie in the park on October 4th, and it's such a special day to me, because my youngest grandchild, Jackson, will be one years old on October 4th. So, we will be watching The House with a clock in its walls with my one-year-old grandson. So, that's going to be very fun, October 4th. I think it's the perfect movie for Halloween coming up. Then, let's talk about some of our missing juvenile. We have Sarah Martinez, who's 16 years old. She's a female. She's got blonde hair and hazel eyes. She was last seen in Las Vegas, and it's unknown what she was wearing. So, please, if you have any information on Sarah Martinez, please call Las Vegas Metro Police at 702-828-3111, or Nevada Child Seekers at 702-458-7009. Also, we have Joseph Delatas missing. He's 16-year-old male. He's got brown hair and hazel eyes. He is about 5'8", 160 pounds. Joseph was last seen in the area of Jones and Gowan. Joseph may be suffering from severe emotional distress. So, please, anyone with information on the known whereabouts of Joseph is strongly urged to contact the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, missing persons detail immediately. Please call 828-3111. Then, I want to wish our Air Force happy birthday. It is their birthday today, September 18th. It is their 72nd birthday, so happy birthday to our United States Air Force. Also, on Friday, it's our POW MIA Recognition Day, so I just want to make sure that our missing in action veterans know that they are never, ever forgotten.
Thank you. Let's go to Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. If you are interested in learning about our city government, then come out tomorrow night, September 19th, from 68, we're going to have Government 101. It's free of charge. You can register beforehand or just walk in. If you come in at 6:00 o'clock, you can spend a couple hours and have some experts from the city of Las Vegas tell you all about how local government works and how you can be involved in making sure we have a great community. So, please come out for that. Then, on September 20th, the Friday, we're going to have a movie in the park at Drangle Hills, Drangle and Gowan, How to Train Your Dragon, The Hidden World. Again, it's free of charge. We'll have popcorn, water, while supplies last. Bring out your lawn chairs and a little Kentucky Fried Chicken, or whatever you want to bring, and you can sit down with your family and let your kids run around until they're worn out. And then, the movie will probably start around 7:30, How to Train Your Dragon, The Hidden World. And again, it's free of charge. And next weekend, the 26th, 27th, and 28th of September, is the annual Greek Food Festival. So, please come out for lunch or dinner and have some baklava, and some souvlaki, and some domadas, and basticho, and calamari, and some uzo, but only one shot of uzo per person, because you know what uzo does to you. So, come on out. You can dance Greek with Councilman Creer. He'll be out there dancing Greek on the dance floor, and it's a great place for the family. It's on the church grounds, a great place to bring your family, and have a great night being Greek. September 26th, 27th, 28th, lunchtime and dinner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Creer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The 20th Annual Historically Black Colleges and Universities Recruitment Fair is this weekend.
The 20th Annual Historically Black Colleges and Universities Recruitment Fairs this weekend. It really is a great event. It's going to take place on Saturday, September 21st, from 9:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at the Doolittle Community Center located at 1950 J Street. This event is in conjunction with Clark County Commissioner Lawrence Weekly, who has worked tirelessly over the years to bring this here. Students have an opportunity to speak to recruiters from 30 to 40 historically black colleges and universities, and there'll be underspotted admission from selected colleges for qualified students. And there also have been known that they've given out college scholarships on the spot there, as well as admission. So, for more information, visit www.youcan.gotocollege.org. Two, we have two Ward Five neighborhood meetings and community workshop to discuss Charleston Heights Park renovations, which will take place on Tuesday, September 24th, at 6:00 p.m., and Saturday, September 28th, at 10:00 a.m. The city's park and rec staff, representatives from Metro Bold and Area Command and Liberty Baptist Church, will discuss the improvements and receive feedback from residents. For more information about these meetings, visit Las Vegas Parks and Rec, R-E-C dot com, or call 702-229-7529. Our Ward Five community conversations begins again. It'll take place on Thursday, the 26th of September, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Tenea Creek Brewery located at 831 West Bonanza Road. Join in the conversations to discuss matters important to you. Residents and businesses are welcome. For more information, contact my office at 702-229-5443. We are also having our movie in the park. It's going to take place for the first time at Patriot Park on September 27th, at 6:30 p.m. Featured movie is Disney's Dumbo. So, bring your blankets and low-back chairs, some more comfortable lawn seating. There's free, this is a free family event. We're all welcome, and I look forward to meeting residents in the far northwest area of Ward Five. For more information, contact my office, 702-229-5443. You can always get in touch with us at Twitter, at CedricCreer, Instagram, CouncilmanCreer, Facebook, CouncilmanCedricCreer. And then, I think we would be remiss if we didn't mention the fact that this weekend, as Life is Beautiful, I'm not sure if there was, if that's something that the mayor's going to address, but please note that there will be a number of street closures and all types of great stuff happening in downtown Las Vegas, but we are looking forward to Life is Beautiful returning. They've got an amazing lineup this year, and it is going to be a very cool event. We wish them all the best.
Thank you. Nice. Okay, Councilman Seaman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, we are going to be having our Senior Guardianship Seminar this coming Friday at 11:00 to 1:00 at the West Sahara Library. And then, on Saturday, are we, my flyers, did you not get my flyers? No, we don't have them. Okay, that's fine. So, Saturday, September 28th, from 12:00 to 2:00, we have our barbecue with our dogs. You can come with your dogs or not to Kellogg Park, and that's 12:00 to 2:00 Saturday for the doggy barbecue. And then, National Family Day at the Veterans Memorial Community Center in Ward Two that the city is putting on, Kindness in Our Community, Saturday, September 21st, from 9:00 to 11:00. And then, if you would like us to come out and film Ward Two small businesses, please contact my office or reply to our Facebook posts, and we'll be happy to feature you on our Small Business Sundays. Our phone number is 702-229-2420. And our new Ward Two office hours, Ward Two Satellite Office over at Veterans Memorial Center, from 7:00 to 11:00 on Thursdays, and for those of you who are working 3:00 to 7:00 the same day on Thursday. So, we look forward to seeing you over at our Satellite Office if you have any issues or concerns. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And so, in conclusion of today's city council meeting, again, thank you for all of you who are so kind to wait till 10:00 for us to start. But as Councilman Creer mentioned, down in the heart of the city, we do have Life is Beautiful this weekend, from the 20th, Friday. It starts, I think, at 2:00, but the roads are already closed in most areas and getting closer to it, but it is going to be a fabulous event with great music and culinary and lectures, and just a fabulous, fabulous whole weekend. But if you have any questions, go to lifeisbeautiful.com and make sure, great educational opportunity for all ages. We have millennials all the way up to people who are in their 60s, 70s, and 80s that love Life is Beautiful. They're expecting a good 45,000 a day, maybe more than that, and the economic benefit to the city is well over $40 million. So, it's a wonderful, wonderful event. On Saturday, this Saturday, and I'm sure you all know the Cirque du Soleil programs and performances that go on in our city and around the world, Guy La Liberté, who was the Canadian who founded Cirque du Soleil in 2007, operated and began a foundation called One Drop, and that's to provide clean water to homes and people around the world. There are so many, so it's in its 12th year. And on Saturday, at the Springs Preserve, starting at 8:30, a day of exercise, a run, a marriage of Cirque du Soleil, and so many people who live here who like to participate in that, healthy and design decals for children. It's just a wonderful, wonderful event. But again, Springs Preserve, 8:30 on Saturday morning, and do jump on when you're in the heart of the city. Do jump on our free loop that takes us all around the city. It's a free shuttle, stopping at museums and stopping at the premium outlets and the Fremont East Area Arts District. And on Monday, October 1st, we'll gather in downtown Las Vegas Community Healing Garden at 10:00 in the evening, in memorial and commemorative recognition of those we lost in one October at our beautiful healing garden, with names being read and candles being lit, and we welcome you all there. It's just a serene and lovely, but quiet event, in memory and nothing else. It's just the names, lighting of candles, tolling of a bell, and taps. And so, we invite you down to that. It's forever etched in our hearts. And for those of us who are of the Jewish faith, we're moving into our highest holiday season, and so, Rosh Hashanah begins a week from Sunday, and then, we have the Yom Kippur observance of great purpose and meaning for us all. Our next council meeting is October 2nd, which I believe is the date, at 9:00. And as always, we thank everyone that is so supportive and involved in city life, our staff, our marshals, our fire and rescue, our technology department, all the staff and planning, and every aspect of it. So, we thank you all, and most specifically to a wonderful council that really is grooving so well together and attentive to really delivering a high quality of understanding and openness and transparency to you, the citizens, because we're all citizens here, and it's our home. So, we love it as you do. So, thank you for attending or watching from home, and thank you, staff, and every part of our staff, and thank you, council. Have a lovely rest of the week. Happy birthday to our baby on the end, and we wish you a lovely day. Thank you, the clerk's office and marshals. We appreciate your keeping us all safe. And we are adjourned.